Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 15th. Rule call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have three items. One is the vehicle policy update, our health insurance, and then the grant application process for city departments. Anything in addition to those three items? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the agenda as presented. Discussion. Fall in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. That motion does carry. Next consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of October 1st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of October 8th, planning commission minutes of October 3rd, an application for exempt permit for the Canoe High County Pheasants Forever Number Two, a resolution accepting agricultural land leases, and for council's acceptance, the police department statistics for the month of September, fire department statistics for the month of September, building inspection report for the month of September, and the accounts payable report for September 27th through October 10th, 2018. Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Motion made and seconded to amend the discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for an ordinance repealing coin-operated amusement devices licensing. Ms. Thompson.
Past practice for the city has been to issue coin-operated amusement device licenses annually for establishments as required by the Wilmer Municipal Code. Staff's recommendation is to adopt, assign a number and order final publication of the ordinance repealing coin-operated amusement device licensing effective October 31st, 2018.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the discontinuation of the coin-operated amusement device, issued a number, and order final publication of the ordinance for this ordinance. Discussion. Rule call.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I guess I'm going to speak that we should maintain the ordinance. I believe that there's a possibility someday that we might get some sort of gaming situation, maybe in the mall. My recommendation would be to maybe not, if you have like 10 or fewer of these gaming type of devices, there's no charge, but if you're above that, we might consider a charge. That would be my suggestion, but I'm just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for comments. Rule call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Nay.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. Next is holiday lighting update from Mr. James Miller and Mr. Mike Kubish. Looks like you're flying solo.
I am flying solo, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the Celebrate the Light of the World display that we are diligently working on. I'm going to get a couple of things on the screen here quick. Before you, I have a map of the vehicle traffic out at Robins Island. This is a, the map is in red of the vehicle traffic. And what we are proposing to do, and Councilmember Fagerly, you'll be happy, we are planning on doing the full loop. Our team has been working on this for about the last month, month and a half. John Schmidt from the Wilmer Fest Board of Directors, along with Chad Kuzman and others, Scott Kubish, Andy Ingham from Ingham and Associates have been putting together a plan and really reviewing what light fixtures or light amenities will be out at the lot. We've learned a lot about how to put together a light show and a lot on how to not put together a light show. We want to keep in mind that the Kuzman property was less than five acres, and so they had about 700,000 lights crammed into five acres. We've got about 20 acres to work with, so it's going to be a little bit different setup and not quite as much of a static display as been in the past. But our intent is to move forward with the full circle. We've been in contact with Mr. John Heron at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, as well as Gary Manzer with Public Works, and Sean Christensen and others. We are intending to continue the light display set to music. Some of the things that will be out there will be include a 50-foot tree, several 40-foot trees, a 25-foot lighted tree, multiple 15-foot trees throughout. One of the features is a 36-foot wide American flag that is lit, as well as a lighted nativity scene, a shooting star across. All in total, it's over 700,000 individual lights. And the cool thing is 99% of them are LED, so the actual cost to run the light display is relatively minimal. Last year, Chad quoted us about $1,000 to run it on his property, so we're hopeful that it can be in that neighborhood as well. We are working on several of the items that will go along with it, including movies and having Santa come out and visit, but to create really this family-friendly event that is free, it will once again be a fundraiser for the Salvation Army and a number of our other area nonprofits. So we're going to continue to continue that piece of it as a charitable event that will be run through a field of interest fund that we're working with the Wilmer Area Community Foundation to set up, so that donors can actually have that tax deduction as well as they are a sponsor or as an individual donor to the piece. One of the things that we did look at, and is the next slide I'll show you, is one of the traffic points. This is one of the areas that we've been working with Gary Manzer about in regards to Public Works' concern about traffic. It's hard to tell from the picture, but you can see the black lines are our traffic pattern. The in part of it would be going through the existing parking lot and then up into the existing loop around. The out would come out just to the south of the existing playground and then out. So we wouldn't have any cross-traffic in that area because that's already a tight point. The cross-traffic wouldn't actually happen until you see just to the north side of the southernmost parking lot structure. So we have been looking at that, looking at the other potential concerns when it comes to traffic. The other big challenge for us is power. We have been in communication, as I said, with Wilmer Municipal Utilities, as well as the Public Works Department, about where power is and where we can access it. So we are ongoing in that process, working with Joe Gatewood as an electrician to potentially put in some temporary lines at this point. But our hope is if everything goes well and we've started the signup process for volunteers to start the lights the night of Thanksgiving, and then that will run every night through December, or excuse me, January 6th, from approximately 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM nightly.
Wow. Great news.
Any questions or concerns?
Councilmember Osmus.
What did you end up doing for the station? The radio station? To be able to listen?
Well, Chad has the equipment. It actually will run on an FM transmitter. We haven't fully tested it, but we do believe if posted at, most likely at the hilltop structure out at Robins Island, we should have enough clearance in order to have the FM transmitter work all the way through. If not, we will work on what would be considered repeaters within that system so that we can continue to have that for the full cycle. The reality of syncing the lights exactly to the music is a little more difficult because we do not have a true static location.
Right.
For people to park and watch the lights because of the drive-through nature, so that won't be as tightly set to music. But the music will still be out there for the enjoyment of the whole light experience.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question on volunteers. I think I saw on Facebook that you were looking for people to come to like kind of organize the lights and.
Correct.
Is that the day you're talking about?
Well, we, yep, we've scheduled volunteers basically every weekend now through, up to Thanksgiving. We start this Friday night with our, Friday afternoon with our first shift, and then there'll be shifts on Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, and then Sunday afternoon. Our hope is to get as many volunteers as we can. We first have to test all of the 700,000 light strings to make sure they actually work, and then we'll actually put them together in the different display packages so we know that this set of lights goes to the 40-foot tree, this goes to the 50-foot trees, all the different pieces. So we'll test all of that first, and then we'll stage things as we want to put them up along the path. And I know John and Chad and the crew have been working on the locations of each of the different amenities, so we have those different spaces, where the big flag is going to go, things like that, so that it kind of creates that drive-through look.
Where do they go to volunteer?
So if you go to our Facebook page, you can sign up on there, and you can sign up on our website as well. So, Wilmerfest.com.
All right. Thank you.
And the more the mayor.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jim. Did you have to buy any more lights or displays, or is everything that Kuzman had?
Everything that Chad has right now is in our repertoire. We are in the process of raising some funds. We have a wish list of more lights. We'd love to see it get over a million lights. I don't know if that's a possibility yet this year, but we're working on that. So that's part of the reason why we set up that fund through the Wilmer Area Community Foundation, so as we get different sponsors, and Chad over the years had many sponsors that were able to step up and help out. This will allow them to have that tax deduction off their donation to help support the lights. One of the things that we're very cognizant of is we want to keep this a free event, and we really want it to be about the celebration of the lights, the holidays, and this opportunity to raise some dollars for some of our area nonprofits. So, yeah, we're still in the process of figuring out how many more we can add, and that kind of is part of the problem of going from a five-acre site to a 20-plus acre site. We're going to need more lights to fill in, and so that will be part of our ongoing process as we continue to build this over the next few years.
And it'll be nice having the loop where they can just drive around, so thank you again.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jim. One of the advantages of having 20 acres is you probably will be able to vary the lights from here to here.
Mm-hmm.
Lot more choices, I guess. And then if you talk to Public Works about snow, you know, removing the snow from the drive-through, if we get snow, they say we're not going to, but.
Well, it's Minnesota, you just never know, right? No, we have talked with Gary Manzer, and then we actually had a meeting with Sean Christensen to look at that. I know typically they haven't plowed the entire piece of that, but we were assured that they would if need be, and it is one of those things, if we have to reach out and contract that out on behalf of Wilmer Fest, we will work with the city to figure out how that best works, because obviously the city crew knows where to put stuff and what to do. That is part of our process too, of where we place lights so that we're not putting them in what I would call a snow dumping spot or a snow zone, if you will, to make sure that we're not damaging any of the displays either. But, yeah, we've been in contact. We've been very happy to have Gary and Sean point out some things to us to make sure we're aware of, and it's a whole new animal for us, so we're learning a lot.
Another option would be the ice, driving on the ice to see the lights, or lights on ice, too.
That's a great idea at some point. I'll stay off driving on the ice, so that's just, that's not my thing.
Well, we're all looking forward to it.
No liability concerns there.
Maybe get one of the ice fishing shanty townies going or something.
James, thank you for the, first of all, for stepping up and taking on this huge responsibility. And I know part of that is you're going to need funds. And, you know, Councilmember Fagerly kind of tipped on it a little bit, but, you know, when you get a plan together, if the city needs to help a little bit, bring it back to the council, and I'm sure we can talk about it. I can't commit the council to anything, but I think this is a good thing for our community, and so when you know what your request needs to be, bring it back and work with Mr. Holland or city administrator to bring that request back to the council for consideration. So thank you for all you do for our community, and this is another example of how Wilmerfest not only impacts just one week out of the year, but you've become the whole deal, and we really do appreciate it. So thank you for your time.
Well, I'll say this, it isn't me, it is our whole board. This was something when we talked about it at length, it was a real easy, a lot of head nods. Again, Wilmerfest is about the celebration of this community, and we want to continue that and to do it in the summer, to do it as part of holidays, and now as the Celebrate the Light, I think it made a lot of sense for us to be involved. Like I said, we're going to learn and have a lot of fun with it. So thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
You got eyes, great peripheral vision. You didn't even look at me. So if volunteers come out on Saturday or Sunday, is there any tools that they should be bringing with them? Are you going to need some drills?
Right now, we won't need any tools, because right now it is simply plugging lights in. So we're going to do all the testing first and then setting out the displays, and then as we get into Weeks Two and Three and Four, our hope is we won't need too many tools, because that's the nice thing about the lights, it's a lot of zip ties.
Okay.
So it's a pretty easy setup for the most part, but if we do, we will definitely share that within our signup setup. Good question.
Great, thank you. Thank you, James. Next, we have a consideration of a memorandum of agreement with Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Sean, just a minute. For the council, we're having technical difficulties with our feed tonight, so if you get calls from constituents, they're working on it currently. I was supposed to say that at the beginning of the meeting, I forgot, so I apologize. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, on page 71 in your packet, in your electronic packet, is the council tasked staff and MUC to meet up, get together, and redo this agreement or relook at this agreement that we've had for many years as far as water line, water main replacements, as it pertains to construction projects and as it pertains to repairs, emergency repairs and otherwise. So we did that. We've had a couple of different meetings and a couple of different backs and back-and-forths. And in front of you, under the current circumstance there, on your form is this summary of what this new and improved agreement looks like between the city of Wilmer and Wilmer Municipal Utilities. In general, the installation of water mains, this part has not changed. Installation of water mains in new developments is paid 100% by the developer. A couple of the changes that come to mind are the fire hydrant costs are now of 100% responsibility of the city. Previously, it was shared, city paid 75%, MUC paid 25%. Water main replacement costs now, however, will be 100% responsibility of MUC. This is a change, and it's going to, which is why we're not starting that until January 1st of 2021, in order to phase that in, if you will. We'll work together to do a capital improvement plan between MUC and the city so that we know which direction we're going with streets, with new water mains, which lines are in need of replacement, which streets are in need of replacement. As we've always done in the past, we just haven't had it in writing. MUC or WMU, I'm sorry, is responsible for street repairs now above and including in any water main breaks. In the past, the city has picked up the repair of the street itself on a water line break. This will start in January 1st of 2020. The city will continue to bill, until that time, will continue to bill WMU for 25% of those replacement costs of anything over eight inches, as it's currently in the agreement. Implementation of this entire document will begin in 2021, construction year, and allow WMU time to budget for these changes. And beginning that year, the city will bill MUC or WMU 80% of the bid project for those water main items, and then the remaining, we put 20% in here, but the remaining dollars will be sent to them after the project is complete, when that water line construction is complete. The last item there, number eight, is basically saying that we're going to use WMU's guide and their modeling and to determine the water main sizing, and that MUC or WMU is responsible for maintaining that model. Recommendation, of course, would be to accept this MOU, or MOA rather, and water mains and hydrants with municipal utilities. And John Heron is here as well, if there's any questions for either or both of us.
Mr. Heron, do you have any opening comments?
No, I'd like to thank Sean and city staff for working with the utilities in developing this MOA. That's much appreciated. Only thing I would want to add, in addition to what Sean pointed out there, Sean did a very fine job with thoroughly reviewing it. As we get into 2019, we'll be doing a rate study. The transfer of the costs associated with this MOA will be about $250,000 to $300,000, a $3 million budget. We're looking at 9%, 10% that this will add to our rates. So that will be part of our rate increase when we come forward with that later in 2019.
Council? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the reason to change what we're presently doing? I mean, it appears, as John just stated, that it's going to cost the utilities, it's going to cost the people that use water more money. Was that part of the reason to change what we were doing presently, or maybe it shifts the burden from taxpayer to water user? Is that proper? Or evidently it's going to reduce the city's cost by the same amount that it's going to cost them? So what would be the reason to change what we have?
I can't speak for what the ultimate or what the initial reason was why we were asked to put this together. What I can say is that in looking at this over the few years since I've been here, in the past, in general, municipal utilities has paid 25% of water main costs, and the city has picked up the rest. And so to answer one of your questions about, does it make sense for the users to pay the fees? In short, in my mind, it does. I mean, your taxes, if you buy an airline ticket, go to taxes to help the airline industry and airports and things of that nature. So whether you're paying it, if I'm paying for your water line or you're paying for your water line, it's kind of the change, and it's the same cost, you're exactly right, and it's same, it's public money, it's just a matter of which pocket it comes out of, so to speak. And so this, to me, made more sense, at least on paper, the fact that it's water line, it's water line specific, and so the water department or water company or portion of the city should pay for that, and therefore the users that use the water.
However, it increases the city's revenue by $200,000. Are we going to give that back? Where on the other hand, we're going to pay $20,000 more through the utilities. So we're going to have $200,000 more in our budget, but we're going to be paying more through the utilities, so it's kind of a double whammy to the guy who owns a house in Wilmer.
Well, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that. I don't know that it increases revenue, $200,000. I'll let John answer as well, but I don't think it increases revenue $200,000, it decreases costs $200,000, and therefore we can use that, those funds for other items, other, you know, amenities or things that we're trying to balance budgets on our annual basis as well.
To expand on Sean's comments a little bit, I don't know, Sean, if you were at some of the early meetings when this was first talked about. The discussion on the water mains stemmed back about a year, 14 months maybe, when the council and utility commission met, we talked about the $4 fee that was put in place and not raised in the last 10 years that's used for infrastructure improvement and replacement. So at that meeting between the council and the commission, that was one of the open items that the council and commission directed staff to address. So when we look at transferring the costs to WMU, WMU, we agree, as Sean stated, you know, it's a water main cost, it probably should be built into our water main rates. The other alternative that was looked at early on with staff that was put out there, an equivalent to that, would be doubling that $4 utility fund charge that's presently in place. As time has passed over 10 years with inflation, the $4 that are presently in place does not cover the costs associated with the replacement that's been tied to those $4. So that's what was driving that discussion. How do we address that shortfall of that $4? And part of that $4 goes to water main replacement, therefore it was felt between city staff and utility staff that the costs associated with the water main should be shifted over to the utilities. So that's a little more background on part of what went into this MOA and why the MOA is in front of the council tonight, so.
But to begin, the $200,000 shift is, you say it's going to cost the city $200,000 less, that means less spending. That means there's $200,000 more in our budget, and we're adding $200,000 of cost to the MUC's bill. Water users are going to be paying that. I was part of the conversation when we did that $4 a month per house or meter. The reason we did it, one of the reasons was because we had some taxpayers that said, we're improving the street in front of their house, and we're putting a new sewer and water, and it costs X amount of dollars. Well, according to the state law, what we charge them can't be, it has to enhance the value of their property by that much. So we took some of those funds, $4 a month, to do the water replacement, so we didn't have to include that in that cost of improving your property. That was one of the reasons, one of the main reasons we did that, and I think it's proper that the MUC pay for the water replacement instead of the city doing it like we had in the past, but still, we're shifting money. We're taking $200,000 expense from the city, and we're adding $200,000 expense to the utilities. It's a $4,000 swing, because the taxpayers aren't going to see that $200,000 savings from the city not spending anymore, because we're going to, it'll be spent in the budget somewhere. Everybody follow me? I mean, just, that's why, that's why we're doing it this way, because it's going to cost people more money. I mean, your water rates are going to go up because of this.
Right.
Councilmember Christensen, I think what happened was there was $3 put towards the water main, and then $1 was put towards the stormwater.
Correct. But the reason we did that was to decrease the value of the amount of money the city charges, so we could say that we're increasing the value of your property by X amount of dollars. That's my question, why would we change? I agree that it should be, maybe the MUC should be taking care of the water part of it, because that's your job. But we're increasing the tax burden or the cost of water at the same time we're doing this.
I think what I heard said that we can either do this memorandum as they're presenting to us, or we would have to double the rate, so go from four to eight. So that would, did I hear that correctly? Mr. Heron?
Well, that would be another, I'm sorry, Mayor, that would be another option, obviously an option, would be not do anything. I mean, that's always an option, not change any of it, keep it the way it is.
Well, you have to repair the roads and.
Yep.
You know, you and I have.
We still have to find money for that.
Office here within the last two months, and, you know, some of the things that are holding us back on some street repairs, we don't have the money to do the water mains.
Right.
This is addressing the issue that, so we keep the water main is what, the conversation we had, as I recall it.
So am I to understand that, John, that what the mayor said is true? If we don't do this, you're going to double that from four to eight? Is that, I didn't understand that when you were talking about that.
For a bit of clarification, that $4 set by city council, as you alluded to, the city council 10 years back. Prior to that, the utility charge was in place, I believe. Some of the research that we found started probably back in 2003, if not sooner than that. The utility fund for replacement was originally established, however, it hasn't been raised since 2008, I believe is the last time it was increased, that the city council increased it. So the $4 was established on the city side, as the mayor alluded to, yourself, as you alluded to, and it hasn't been raised. Over the years, there's been a lot of inflation, plus the cost of, you know, streets, water mains, wastewater lines have escalated above inflation, and therefore the $4 that was set 10 years back is not covering. So as Sean alluded to, there's a couple of choices. One is do nothing, two, basically to bring that $4 fund. One is do nothing, two, basically, to bring that $4 fund solvent, it would have to be doubled up, or transfer some of those costs that are covered by that $4 over to the utility. And then the city would have to address the shortfall in that $4 in addition to what we're transferring over to, over to the utility.
But we're not transferring money to utilities from the city.
No, but we're transferring expense.
Yes. And so it's going to cost you more.
Yes.
So it's going to cost the water user more.
Correct.
But I thought the mayor said that you were going to double it if we don't do this. That wouldn't be the case.
I don't want to speak for the mayor, but the mayor probably provide clarification to his comment. I know what he meant, but...
What, in the opening comments, what was said is that if to keep the rate where it needed to be, it would take an additional $4. So I was just clarifying that point that Mr. Herron made that in order to cover that expense, to make up the $200,000, that is another $4 on these...
Per meter.
Per meter, correct. That's what I was inferring. I was not suggesting that as an alternative. I was just saying that that would be the expense that would be required.
Okay, now I get your thinking, okay. But I just, I still see it as a transfer of expense, but it's going to cost the water users more money. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mary Meskey.
I think that everybody's right again. I was going to bring up the $4 as well, and thank you for doing that and giving that history. But the fact of the matter is that this delineates exactly responsibility as how it has evolved. This may not be what the intent of those dollars were when it started, but this is what it has evolved into. And then we're going to have expenses that are from the fire hydrants that we don't have of 25%. So it won't be a full $200,000. But I think the real question is, this is probably where the money needs to come from for those expenses. But what we need to do is probably revisit exactly how we're going to utilize that $4. I think that's where that question comes in, is what are we going to actually use that for now when we're not using $3 of it dedicated to water mains because those will be diverted? And that's, I think, a valid concern and question of what are we going to do with those dollars now? I don't think that's a question necessarily for this evening because I think that this MOA defines where we should be. It clearly delineates what the current situation is. So I'm in favor of the MOA as it is presented here. And if we're looking for a motion, I would move to approve the MOA.
Second.
Most of the made, second to approve the MOA as presented, Counselor Mary Meskey.
So just for clarification, the $4 is collected. And tell us where it goes now. So the city is getting the money, $3 and $1. Will you please clarify that?
That $4 roughly generates $400,000 that we use within and across our improvement program each year. So it is used for streets and water and storm and sanitary and curb and gutter. And so I've heard it a number of different ways. I hadn't necessarily heard the three and the one before. I'd heard in the past for a while that, you know, that one of the intents was a dollar for water, a dollar for storm, a dollar for sanitary and a dollar for streets. Now, we all know that when those projects come in and are bid, it's one large project. And so we put that $400,000 roughly into our project budget as we're creating these projects on an annual basis. Does that answer your question?
So we're passing, yes, it makes sense. We're passing the cost to the utilities. So I think what Counselor Mary Meskey said is that we probably do need to revisit what is our plan if we're going to continue to charge the $4. In addition, you know, what are we going to do with that money now? I mean, how are we going to enhance the things that we need to work on with that?
Sure.
Versus just passing the costs and saying we have that money.
My intent, until told otherwise by this body, is to continue to use that $4 for our improvement projects because we're not covering the costs that we need to on an annual basis to do the streets that we need to do.
And I think if you look at how we fund the streets, perhaps we need to revisit that subject then with what those $4 is using to contribute when we do the 25... I mean, we assess the people 75 and we contribute 25 and where those funds are coming from.
I don't disagree.
Mr. Herron, I have a question for you and probably the fire chief as well. When the eight-inch water main up sizing went into effect, a lot of water mains within the city were four-inch or six-inch. And the upsizing of the water mains is a considerable cost and also affects the potability of the water. Is there an analysis that could be done between the fire chief and your staff to determine whether the upsizing is still required? Because if we take a look at a lot of the water mains that have been put in in the last, I believe that policy was, Counselor Christensen, Fagerly might know when it went in. But when the policy was put in, it was because there was a lot of undersized water mains in the community. And so if we are putting in the eight-inch water mains to address the issue of the four-inch and the six-inch mains, maybe that could end up being a cost-saving measures in the future as long as we didn't affect our fire protection or we didn't affect the potability of the water.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. I believe the appropriate answer to that would be, Burnson McDowell is hired. We're just about, probably 90% complete with a water system modeling study. That study will tell us the water main sizes that we need throughout town to provide first potable water as well as fire protection. Most lines, other than your transmission lines, you know, through town, the main lines through the main artery of town, other than that, you know, anything over eight inches typically for fire protection. And like I said, our modeling will tell us that. At the utilities, we do not have the capabilities to model the water system, determine the size of the water mains that we need throughout town or when we replace water mains, what size they should be. But the modeling that we're doing will tell us that. So, and I don't believe the fire chief has that modeling available.
No, I don't believe it's available. What I was asking is, could you guys work together and see if that could be a cost savings? At one time, I was pretty intimately familiar with the water distribution system. And so I have done some of that analysis myself and have had those thoughts in the back of my mind. But at that time, we still had a lot of the four-inch lines that were a problem. And I think we've taken care of most of those now. So, I mean, we still have some down on 13th, 14th, 15th. I think there's some stuff down over there that's still four-inch, but I don't think there's a whole lot of four-inch left in town.
No, there isn't.
Because we have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying, I'm sorry, roll call.
Counselor member Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you both for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is consideration of an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance to rezone land from limited industry to general business. I'm not going to say your name wrong, so come on up and introduce yourself. Mike was telling me earlier that I'm telling people, calling people by the wrong names. So I'm trying to be better, so...
Swedberg.
Swedberg.
Yep, just like it looks. Mayor, members of the council, tonight before us, we have an introduction of a rezone ordinance, as the mayor stated, from limited industry to general business. This rezone is kind of a creative solution that we came up with for a request that we received much earlier this year. We had a interested party in providing some daycare service for the community. And as we well know, that is a much-needed service here in Wilmar and in Candy Ojai County in general. The particular property they were interested in is zoned, limited industry. And a daycare center simply is not compatible with that zone. However, we did some further looking into the request. Planning Commission reviewed it several times and did not find that a text amendment or a single parcel rezone was feasible in this case. However, staff presented a solution for a commercial corridor leading into the industrial park. And so as we see on the map, all of the areas outlined in yellow are currently zoned in I-1, limited industry. And this rezone would rezone them to general business, creating that corridor, as I stated, into the industrial park. We chose a couple of other properties that Planning Commission, upon their request, we removed because of requests from the public. So there's about four parcels that were removed from the initial rezone. However, it doesn't change the intent of the rezone and it doesn't change the particular property that is of interest. The property of interest is the Pert, it's currently owned by the Perts. It's on, if we look at kind of the cross of Industrial Drive and Trot Avenue, it would be on the southwest side, on that triangle there. All of the land that would be rezoned is commercial in nature because of their smaller-sized parcels or their visibility from Highway 12. No, this rezone doesn't affect the current use of anything that's there. All of the uses fit within the general business zone. And if for some reason we were to include in a future rezone something that would be considered non-conforming, it would never require somebody to halt their use of their property. But in this particular case, we don't have any of that situation. If this rezone is approved, the daycare center would be permitted outright. So it wouldn't go back through Planning Commission or anything like that at this particular property. The corner, the northeast corner of Industrial Drive and Trot Avenue, where MTT entities currently owns and it's symbolized as red crosses on the map, that particular property is zoned general business. Don't ask me the history, I'm not quite sure how that little island ended up being. It's been there on several zoning maps for many, many years. So this would kind of take care of that little blip in the map as well. So it's staff recommendation that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on November 5.
So moved.
Second.
Most of the made and seconded to introduce for the public hearing, the rezone of certain properties. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign, then motion carries. Thank you for your work, appreciate that. Next is consideration for authorization for a grant for game time playground equipment. Mr. Baumgartner.
Mayor, member of the council, tonight I'm requesting a grant application for game time playground equipment. We've been, I'm requesting the grant to be used, to use 2009 CIP dollars and to pay for it for this year and 2018. Some of the history, the city has been working with game time on many of the playground projects that we have been doing. This grant is available annually to us and we have been successful recipients of this in the past. The grant matches a percentage of what we have budgeted. Staff has been working with Public Works of the placement of the playground equipment and we are looking at Voss and Rainbow Parks. Current circumstance now, we have $100,000 budget for the playground equipment for 2019. The dollars would need to be re-appropriated to be used this year in 2018. The grant will cover 43% of the dollars that we are putting towards the equipment only. The labor and other items that are not covered, are not covered by the grant and the total project will not exceed $100,000. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to apply and accept the grant of order and re-appropriate the funds to be used in 2018.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Most of the made and seconded to approve a resolution authorizing grant application for game time playground equipment and taking funds from 2019 into 2018, capital. Discussion. Counselor Mary Meskey.
Thank you, Rob. Question for you is, how much of a $100,000 budget for that is actually for equipment?
Well, it's going to be roughly about $60,000. Depending on what, how much equipment we want to get and how much the labor cost is going to be to put the equipment in, plus the engineered wood to go into the playground and any other concrete work that would need to be placed.
Is that kind of a standard breakdown? Because we've talked about putting $100,000 in budget to repopulate the parks and so on with equipment. Is that sort of the ratio every time we do that?
Yeah, we said about 25% would be labor. And then we would look at other funds for the engineered wood and concrete, whatever needs to be replaced. Thanks.
Additional conversations. Roll call.
Counselor member Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of removal of ag land exemption on special assessments. Ms. Thompson.
It's a policy of the city to temporarily exempt from assessment certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes. If the agricultural exemption is granted, it remains on the city deferment program until its useful life is attained. And the useful life is attained on this property that we're proposing to remove. So council, or staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the removal of agricultural use for temporary exemption subsequent deferment of special assessments.
Someone want to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most of the made and seconded to approve removal of agricultural land exemption for special assessments. Discussion. Roll, Counselor Mary Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the land we're dealing with here? The impact is $12,119.
Ms. Thompson.
This land is the property owned by the Bernard Revocable Trust and it's along Civic Center Drive, just east of the Mobile Home Park.
Sure, I'm familiar with it. Thank you.
Additional conversation? Roll call. I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Counselor Mary Christensen, do you have another comment?
Yeah. I understand the policy, 40 years and 20 years. Is this land not under a purchase agreement presently?
I think they pulled that, I think.
They pulled it? Okay.
Right? They pulled the purchase agreement?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that came to us two meetings ago.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Counselor member Osmis.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Abstain.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of agricultural land exemption special assessments. Ms. Thompson.
Annually, the city, I should say, the policy of the city to temporarily exempt from assessment certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes and each year contact is made with listed landowners to ascertain their desire to place the land in agricultural use for the upcoming crop year. The resolution listing the property owners who have made application for agricultural land exemption in 2019 and have met the criteria contained in city's comprehensive assessment policy and is staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution approving these lands for exemption of special assessments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most of the made and seconded, discussion. Counselor Mary Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Julie, do we know how many years this land has been in exemption and what's left?
The ones that we're currently dealing with, each one of them, there's several parcels of land and several projects, and the projects are listed on the resolution.
But how about the years that they're, that they've been in? You know, are they approaching the 40 and 20-year life?
Annually, we check each one and as you can see, they start Project 9002, 93, 2005, 2014, 2005. We've got an 86 project and a 16 project.
Is that written on here somewhere?
They are listed on the resolution. They are listed on the resolution.
I see the listed projects, but I don't see any years.
Yeah, each identifies the parcels, the owner's name, the parcel number, and just below it says project number and then the dollar amount.
Page 84.
The project number contains the year, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
The first two digits of the project number are the year the project was completed.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of Caris Health lease agreement. Mr. Christensen. How did you get so lucky to deal with this one?
I'm always lucky.
We knew that.
Anytime I get to stand up here and talk to you people, I feel the luckiest man alive.
The luck's all on this side.
All right, all that aside.
And we have people leaving the audience.
That's all it took. I should have said that earlier. In front of you tonight is an agreement with Caris Health would like to run two fiber optic lines from their Rice Hospital. Effectively, one runs from Rice Hospital to ACMC, and one will run from Rice Hospital to the new Caris Health Surgery Center. And the agreement has been prepared between the staff and attorney, and we were recommending each line to be charged a fee of $5,000 for a total of $10,000. Recommendation would be to accept the license agreement with Caris Health for these two fiber optic lines that they would, by the way, like to install yet this month or this fall for the amount of $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of staff to enter into an agreement with Caris Health for the installation of two fiber optic cable lines. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, we have a business-related vehicle operation policy that has been brought forth from the work session. Ms. Beckman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have before you consideration of our business-related vehicle operation policy update. This is adding updates of safety and cell phone usage to our currently existing policy to apply to all of our staff while they are driving city vehicles. We would recommend you approve the updates as included in your packet unless there's any other concerns.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the vehicle use policy. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign, that motion does carry. Next is the health insurance plan for 2019. Ms. Beckman.
So we have our proposals in front of you that we received from the four different providers for eight different HSA plans and their designs. And as we referenced earlier in the work session, the cheapest plan option is PEIP going forward in 2019. However, it does require union approval if that is the provider you wish to use in 2019. And you would also need to provide, excuse me, a secondary plan option in case any of the unions vote to reject PEIP as the insurance option. So I would need, if you would like to choose based off of cost, the second lowest cost option is Plan Number Five, and the third lowest cost option is Plan Number Six.
Staff's recommendation is to PEIP plan with the option of Option Number Six, correct?
Correct, yes.
I would move to adopt the PEIP plan as our primary plan and the secondary plan, Plan Number Five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the PEIP plan as the primary insurance and Option Number Five as the alternative. And you're understanding that's against what was recommended by the HR Director, correct?
Correct.
Additional discussion. Councilmember, oh, Alvarado, I'm sorry.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. Now, when you spoke to us at the work session, you said that Plan Number Six was more beneficial to the retirees.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, so the early retirees, early retirees currently on the plan, there are 17 of them, and their exposure risk, meaning the amount that they would pay in premiums for the full year, plus the amount they could end up paying out of pocket for the out-of-pocket max. For Plan Number Five, it does increase for all but two of the retirees currently on the plan. For Plan Number Six, it decreases for most of the employees, their exposure risk. However, with PEIP, it does decrease for all early retirees. So PEIP would be the best option for the retirees to decrease their exposure risk, but they will have to follow whatever their respective union votes to accept for a plan.
So the retirees don't have a vote? They file suit to the union?
Yes, they would have to follow whatever union they were in when they were an active employee.
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in our charter, I didn't look it up for the meeting, but I believe it states that our obligation is to offer a plan. And it doesn't say anything about unions voting on it. So where does that come into play? Where do they, where do they get this right to vote on it when it just says we have to offer a plan?
It comes in on the PEIP statute that was on your work session packet. This is only a requirement for PEIP. It is not a requirement for any of the other plans that I brought before you tonight. So it's a special requirement only for PEIP. I believe it's on the second page of the statute. It's the first, first sentence on the second page. Each exclusive representative for all eligible employer determines whether the employees it represents will participate in the program. So it's specific just to PEIP for providing insurance.
Okay, then, can we offer that, any of these plans without PEIP then?
Yes, you could just choose any of the other seven options, and that would be the plan that is offered in 2019.
Okay, could you explain to the public the beneficial, benefits of PEIP?
The benefits of PEIP would be it is the lowest cost option to the city.
I understand.
I have.
I mean, that's the main benefit, is it basically?
Yes, and it is the least exposure for the early retirees, PEIP is. And it also has the maximum cost the employee could incur is 1,000 if you're enrolled in the single plan, 2,000 if you're enrolled in the family plan. So that is also a lower exposure risk than Plan Number Five.
And without PEIP?
Then the next lowest cost option is Plan Number Five, and it is $115,000 more than PEIP. It's the, that one you don't deal with the tier system. It's an in-network or out-of-network provider.
Then, could you say the motion again? Is Plan Number? I was motioning to recommend PEIP as the primary and Plan Number Five as the secondary. Okay.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay, when you say exposure, is that like a person's deductible?
That's the total cost they could incur in one year. So they have their premium cost that they're going to have no matter what, and then their medical bills is the other part we don't know. But the maximum that they could have is 3,000 individual, 6,000 family. And then they've hit their out-of-pocket max, and then the rest is covered by insurance. So, that's why it's called exposure risk, because it's not guaranteed they will spend that much money if they never go over their deductible.
Okay. And then, just for the public's information, when we talk about PEIP, the initials are P-E-I-P, which stands for Minnesota Public Employees Insurance Program. So often we use initials and they don't understand what we're talking about, and so I think it's good to share that.
Councilmember Meskey.
Just a reminder, when we did go into this and tried to find a plan, we intentionally offered a plan that we thought it was going to be PEIP, and we thought the tiers would be defined by it when we offered it. And that was a high deductible plan, but it was also with a tax shelter, a health savings account tied to it, kind of a deal. And it was an intentional move, and we didn't get that language put into contracts, and that's why we stay here. You just heard, it probably is the best benefit for employees to go to that, but again, it's an unknown because the unions have to vote for it. So, in light of that, I'm fine with the motion the way it states, because it's truly, I thought, in my opinion, that is where we were supposed to be at this moment anyway, and hopefully it gets us there. If not now, I guess it'll be in two years.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you once again tell us what was budgeted for next year's health insurance?
2019 was budgeted 2.2 million.
2.2 million, and prior to that, it was 1.?
1.7.
1.7? Okay, thank you.
And the PEIP is 1.9?
If everyone stays at their current enrollment, PEIP is 1.9.
Just a point of clarification, would the unions have to vote in two years, or would it be automatic that they would be in PEIP?
I'm not sure what I heard.
I think they still have to vote, don't they?
I thought they did too, that's why, I thought you said that we'd be there in two years.
Well, we have to revisit it then, I thought you said.
Revisit it in two years, yeah, okay.
That's why I'm at.
Okay, yep. I just want, need to clarify it in my mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
The figures that you're using do not include the amounts that we are planning to contribute to their deductibles, correct? You're referring to premium amounts only?
The annual estimated cost includes premiums and HSA contributions.
Okay, thank you.
Additional conversation. Councilmember Meskey.
Since we're throwing numbers, I mean, we talk about going to PEIP and this increase of $200,000 by moving to this plan. What would the plan estimates be had we done nothing with insurance and kept on the plan that we currently had for next year?
It's extremely difficult to say. We don't know if people would change plans. We do know there would be a 9.9% increase in premiums if we continued all three of the other plans.
Which would well overshadow a $200,000 increase in insurance?
It would be a large increase.
Which is why we made the decision that we did when we did.
Is this a roll call because it's a healthcare, any of this expenditure, or is it a simple motion?
I have it as a motion. I'm not sure that, I don't think you need a resolution.
That's what Mr. Fitzsimmons said as well, was a motion.
Simple motion. All in favor of the motion as presented to offer PEIP as the primary insurance with Option Number Five as the backup, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign?
Aye.
That motion does carry. I'm sorry, councilmember.
I just wanted on record that I need to recuse myself from that vote.
So we have six ayes, one no, and one abstention. Next is, thank you, Ms. Beckman. Next, Chief Felton on application, and in talking with the city administrator, your recommendation is, is that this would be for all departments, not simply the police department.
Correct, yes.
Please introduce the subject of grant submission approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item before you is the consideration to authorize the city administrator to approve the application of non-matching grants up to $10,000. Successful grants will still be reviewed by the full council prior to acceptance.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve a motion that would allow city departments to apply for grants in the amount up to $10,000 with the approval from the city administrator to come back to the council for approval before acceptance. Discussion. Councilmember Meskey.
Brought up in the working session, I'll bring it up again. It doesn't exclude them to be brought here as well, and that hopefully if there's enough lead time that you can engage the council before those grant applications go in as well. But I understand when there's little time and you're under the gun makes sense to me.
Correct.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign, that motion does carry. Next item on the agenda is, we will be going into closed session to discuss selling real property developed or considered counteroffers. So, I'm sorry. Yes, I skipped right over it. I have my notes, and I apologize. City administrator comments.
Two items. One, just a reminder that Saturday night at the conference center at 6:00 PM, there will be a fundraiser for one of our firefighters and their child who's been hospitalized. It's at 6:00 PM is the silent auction, I understand, and at 7 o'clock is the music session. You can't buy tickets at the door or see the fire chief tonight and pick up your tickets. Also, secondly, I want to mention to the council that the mayor and I had a discussion, and we would like to have a retreat in January. So if you could look at your calendars for January 11th and the 12th, that's a Friday evening, and the 12th is a Saturday. If you would just send me an email and let me know if those two days you would be available, I inquired with the staff today. Also, to let you know that I've put a call in to Mr. Bruce Miles to lead the workshop slash retreat, and so I'm going to be getting an estimate for his cost of his services, and I'll bring that back also to the council and to the mayor for review. But we're looking at setting the priorities for 2019, and I know that we've done the building study, we know our priorities, but as the mayor and I discussed, we would just like to have staff and the elected officials, and we will have a new member, at least one, if not more, members for the council in January. So we want to make sure that they're part of that discussion. So, that's the reason behind it. If you have any questions, give myself or the mayor a call. Anything else, mayor? Okay, thank you.
Under mayor's announcements, just a reminder, October 29th will be a work session starting at 5 o'clock here. If you have agenda items, get them to the city administrator or one of the leads for the individual committees. One of the things that we'll be talking about at that, if we have 100% attendance to the council, will be the work session slash committee structure. That will be an agenda item, and at that point, that's all we have on the agenda, with the exception of what Councilmember Nelson brought up today, of some finance reports. So those will be the two items at this point that we have on the agenda. Councilmember Plowman.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Nothing.
Councilmember Nelson.
I, just a reminder that the League of Minnesota City's regional meetings are going on. I did sign up to go to the one in Marshall, if anyone's interested. It is just afternoon, early evening, and I think the cost is, cost is $45. So it's a worthwhile time to visit with other cities and to learn what's going on. So I'd invite you to come with me if somebody wants to go.
Councilmember Christensen.
It's still not snowing.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. Just a reminder to folks that if you'd like to volunteer for Celebrate the Lights, go to Wilmerfest.com.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a couple things. Kind of a public service announcement as a result of a call I received. If a police officer stops you and asks you your name, give him your real name. You'll solve, you'll save yourself a great deal of heartache. Secondly, do not run from the police. It's not a good idea. We had a great event on Saturday night, the Wilmer Community Foundation recognized some local people that, I'd just like to share their names for not only our community but for many communities, I'm guessing that they touch Ross and Don Marcus and their families. We've seen their names on the Destination Playground, we've seen them on the sporting events, they're big. So if you see them, thank them. But I, we've heard Chad and Angie Kuzman's name tonight. They brought the lights of the world from $800 to $810,000, and now we're going to be a part of that. That's very exciting. And I remember seeing Chad doing some work at the Destination Playground, and I think he's got a jump on a lot of people. What he did out there was, he planted seed. He planted the grass around the. He planted the, the grass around the playground and, and that action to me tells me that he knows that if you put some seed down, you're going to get some growth. And he's done that by giving money back to the community through the Salvation Army. We will never know how many lives he's touched, but he's touched many lives and you just have to know that's been positive for, for our community. So, hats off and salutes to, to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmas.
I just wanted to thank the fire department and the police department for a great event, even though it was rainy and it was cold, they served up some, some great tacos in a bag and some good fire demonstrations and it was, it was a great event. And just want to thank you for all your work and effort putting into it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mesky.
Lots of road projects around Wilmer and sometimes it's very frustrating, but please honor and respect those things because in the end you can get nice roads like the Seventh Street Railroad Crossing, which I can now go over at the speed limit. So, thank you and I'm looking forward to driving all the other places where all those projects are going on.
Thank you. Next council will go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05 Sub 3C to determine the asking price for real property to be sold by the city and/or develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real property. This agenda item for this portion of the regular meeting is to determine the asking price for real property to be sold by the city to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the sale of city-owned real property identified as Block 3 Industrial Park, Fourth Members of the council, following the completion of our business, we will now go back into open session and I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase agreement with JDC Management Incorporated, our affiliate entity, in substantial conformity with the draft agreement reviewed by the city council in closed session and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign such agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? This is a nice project. We're pleased that you're coming to Wilmer and we look forward to working with you in the near future. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Someone moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.
Well done.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Good work.